Okay, I'd like to invite everyone to stand for the pledge of the flag.
Pledge of the flag. To the United States of America and to all who for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Welcome everyone to our early meeting tonight, 6 o'clock. So I'm sure we maybe threw some people off, but I think we advertised it very well to make sure it was at 6 o'clock. And just so that the camera knows, we've got a public hearing at 7 o'clock. And at that point, we're hopefully be able to adjourn pretty quickly and head down to Lyons Pharmacy for the ribbon cutting at 7:15. So I think we'll be able to pull all that off. You'll see that Commissioner Gibbons and Commissioner Jablonski is not here with us tonight. Both of them had other commitments. Mary Jo is actively working down downtown tonight with the producing and production of Restaurant Impossible. And Commissioner Gibbons, he had a family, I think it was a...
I'm sure he had...
Yeah, I know he had another commitment that he couldn't make tonight, but they give their best. All right, very good. Minutes of February 4th, 2015. Do we have a motion to approve the minutes?
To move.
Got a motion?
Second.
Second, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Financial report. Do we have a motion to approve the financial report?
So move.
Got a motion?
Second.
And a second, any discussion?
No.
Here none, all in favor?
Aye.
No questions on the train.
Lou, we're gonna put your town administrator's report. We're gonna move you right up.
First item I have is ordinance 2-2015. This ordinance was introduced on January 21st, and since that time has been amended several times, including an amendment made today based on council suggestion, which I believe was a very good suggestion. This ordinance relates to the time limits for parking in certain streets, and the changes that have been made include Main Street, both sides of Main Street from Bridge Street to Grooms Lane, which is next to the Circuit Courthouse. It's a three hour, it's been increased to three hours. Main Street on both sides, it's two hours between Grooms Lane and South Street. That's the metered area. That's a two hour zone, or two hour limit. Main Street on both sides, three hours from South Street to Del Raven. All these parking limits apply 8:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. Monday through Friday. Outside those limits, there's no restriction on the time limit for parking. On South Street, it's three hours on both sides between East High Street and Main Street. On South Street on the west side, it's three hours from East Main Street to Howard Street. And on South Street on the east side, between 105 South Street to East Main Street, it's three hours. The remaining portion of that street on the east side from 105 to Howard Street, as I mentioned in my email, is special purpose parking for the residents who live there. It's been that way for many years. The only other addition here is three hour parking at 107 North Street. That's the parking lot between 8:00 a.m. and 4:00 p.m. Monday through Friday, so that was increased to three hours. This has been, this was introduced on the 21st, and I suggest that our, as the board will adopt this ordinance, adds amended. If it's amended, if it's adopted, day will be effective March 10th, 2015. And Mr. Hanley will be responsible for placement of signs in the areas that are affected.
Do we have a motion to approve the amended version?
I make a motion to approve ordinance 2-2015 parking schedules.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
Yes. Just piggyback off of that. We were going to do municipal parking. We'll put a big parking sign in the, down by the farmer's market, right? Where do we stand on that?
Down by the farmer's market.
It's behind...
Sign like this will be created for the 107 North Street parking lot. The other signs will be free parking, just says free parking.
On the other side where Edward's Fashion, behind that's the parking lot he's talking about, municipal parking in the back.
We were gonna put a big sign there, right?
Just letting people know that there is parking in the back.
Free parking. Yeah, free parking. I have free parking signs.
Okay, well, that's what you're bringing up, right?
Yeah.
Just wanted to know where we're at with that.
Well, just had to put them up. Actually, I think the mayor's on there in my office.
Yeah, I would say let's get them up.
Okay.
I think that'd be great.
I'll give it to Dan and he'll put them up.
Sure.
They got everything done one time.
Perfect. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Took a while for parking. It took a while, but we made it. And the next one will probably Jason again in six months.
No, I'm not touching it.
Okay, Lou, pivotal holdings.
Next item I have is pivotal holdings. We received a petition for annexation from a company called Pivotal Utility Holdings Incorporated doing business as Elkton Gas. I'm sure everyone's familiar with Elkton Gas. This relates to their property located at 142 Bell Hill Roads, 3.463 acres of land. It's outside of town in Elkton. Elkton Gas is going to build an office out there, aren't they? They're gonna build their office there, do improvements. They do not have water and sewer there, or actually they do have water and sewer, but it's a septic, I believe, in a well. And they need to, when they expand, they are not allowed to expand those premises using the onsite well and water, so, I mean, well and sewers. So they're gonna tie into our sewer, and they'll have to tie into Artesian Water because it's in Artesian franchise area. The sewer line is located near this property, and across the property, across the road from the property in Bell Hill Road is the Artesian water line. Ironically, the water that Artesian sells to customers in this area is purchased from the town of Elkton. It's purchased at the town rate because these properties are within the town, but they purchase the water from the town. The, this parcel, map, 303 parcel 1020, what I'll do, if the board accepts the petition for annexation, I will present a resolution at the March 4th meeting. A resolution will outline the dates when we'll hold public hearings. And because it's less than 25 acres under state law, then we only have to have two weeks note, or two notices in the paper for the public hearing. The planning commission is not required to have a public hearing for an annexation. It's controlled by the Title IV of the state article pertaining to municipal matters. So at the next meeting, I'll present a annexation, I mean, a resolution for introduction, and we'll hold a public hearing probably in late March, early April. Once the resolution is adopted and becomes effective, I believe, it'll be a 40, 45 days.
Do we have a motion to accept a petition?
So move.
And second?
Second.
Any discussion? Steve, the only discussion that I would have, could you provide to the board the financial impact, projected financial impact of this annexation, and along with the personal property tax that may be associated with that? Is that something we can't? We could probably get that from the county right now.
I would say I assume they're gonna move what they currently have out there, so we can assume would be about the same size.
It would be, okay.
There. I don't know what improvements they're gonna make to their property. I can look at what is assessed now at our rate, but I assume they're gonna do something other than just move in and see what's currently there.
Yeah, what's there now is just equipment building and everything.
They're gonna build it all.
So the assessment on property, show improvements, but not to the extent that they plan to. And then once the, the office building is fully developed, and the Department of Assessments will reassess the property and will give real property tax. Because it's commercial property, we'll zone it C3 highway commercial, and it will not have providing service other than police services or inspection services by their building every day. But we don't provide trash service or anything to them because they're commercial.
Look, there'll be some building permits.
Yeah, building.
Okay, then there'll be major facilities for sewer, not for water, but for sewer.
Okay.
Then I bill them, I will ultimately bill them for the sewer service based on the water they'll get from Artesian Water, which is similar to what we do with the Valley of Elk Manor Company, or the Purvison Road, Fort Appleton Road.
Very good. Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. You names.
Historic District Design Standards, I think Ms. Minner is gonna comment on the, on these standards. Actually, we have a proposal by JMA Corporate, or JMA Cultural Area Services doing business at Commonwealth Cultural Resources Group, Inc. I think Ms. Minner's been intimately involved with the Historic District Commission. Is that what it is?
Yeah.
It used to be Hark, I mean, I just tried to get all that spread away. And they're recommending to go forward with this firm for $36,000.
$278.
$278. Want to comment on?
The proposal by JMA was distributed to the board at the last workshop meeting. I'm not sure if you had a chance to review it or not. As I had mentioned at the workshop meeting, the Elkton Historic District Commission had entertained at least four other proposals, three other proposals for historic district design guidelines, and this, they were not happy with the previous proposals, but this last proposal, they are enthusiastic about. They would recommend that we award the contract to JMA Cultural Heritage Services. The Westchester office would be the office that we would keep on the way.
Very good. You're, that's the, you had already figured that into your budget, right?
Yes, it's in my master under planning budget.
Right. Thanks.
Do we have a motion to approve?
So move.
And a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Very good. We're moving right along here. Very good, thank you Lou. I didn't make the last town meeting, and I was actually traveling on town business, or not town business, I can say I was there for some town business also, but we've been looking at solar panel farms, and I didn't have much success. I was able to see two locations, but being able to talk to the correct people was a challenge. It just wasn't happening. So it was not very fruitful as far as gaining information. But I was out there for the World of Concrete, which is for my business, and something that I'd like to see, maybe a representative of the town in the Public Works Department or Building Inspector go out to that trade show. That might be one that you might want to budget yourself for. I don't know exactly how much that would be, but we could look at that. But it's a, it's a, anything, and literally, if you ever wanted to know about concrete, it's at that show. Whether it's equipment, whether it's building sidewalks, shaving sidewalks, adhesives, epoxies, it's an amazing, amazing show. And just to put it in perspective, I walked, literally walked 10 miles a day at that show. And it was a, it's a really interesting show, and I think we could alternate maybe some of the employees each year so they can get a little bit better knowledge of those things. And there's classes out there. The classes are free, so if you sign up for the classes, seminars the day before, you'll learn how to do some unique things. I mean, there was a product out there, and I'm rambling on, but I'm trying to kill a little time too. They have a product that if we wanted to take this from like the top, and if it was torn, ripped, or scorched, however it may be, they can come in, or you could come in, our guys could come in and literally put a epoxy adhesive, concrete mix on it, and in about 12 hours, you've got, it's an extra lifetime. By the square foot, it's an amazing product. And I know that we're talking about, or we were looking at our floors out into the other rooms areas here, and it might be, I'm sure there will be a product that we could find that might work well for the town of Elkton at some point. So I was out there, I looked at a couple areas, and with really no success. It was too many days out there, quite frankly, but I'm glad to be back. Today, actually, starting last week, as everyone's aware of today, that Restaurant Impossible has been in the town of Elkton, and it's been a unique experience without having to sign off where I can't say too much of what I know what's happening, but everyone here, of course, was, most of us were part of the mock show that we had upstairs today, which was very touching, quite frankly. I think, I think that the town of Elkton's gonna look fantastic once we go through this whole process and it's filmed. It'll be on national TV in less than eight weeks. There's been, it's the first time they've ever done a municipality. It's the first time that they've ever done a small town restaurant, and they've never had the support that they've had from anywhere else before. And it's, it's real interesting how they put these shows together, and I have to tell you, and I'll tell you, I felt as though I didn't do very well yesterday in the filming session that they had me on, but hopefully there's enough, they filmed me enough that maybe they can cut out everything and have me a good 30 seconds that we can be proud of ourselves with. But I did everything I could to promote the town during the time that they gave me, and in fact, he said to me, you said, in fact, one of the comments, one of the cutting, you said Elkton too many times. And, but I, that was my job. I said Elkton, I said Van Renen, I said fire. I had to say this as much as I could. They cut it, they cut it out.
I know you want to do this.
I'm just letting you know. I should go. I mentioned everybody. But tonight at 7:15, we're actually gonna have the ribbon cutting at Lyons Pharmacy. They're gonna be unveiling the new image of the pharmacy. I'm actually excited to see it. I have no clue what it's gonna be like. You know, if you go in there and you look, if you've ever ate at Lyons Pharmacy, you can look at it, and I think they could create more seating, maybe, but I'm not sure what the venue's gonna be, but it'd be kind of exciting to see that tonight. We've got, I think everyone probably saw in the newspaper, we got a new, one of our stores on Main Street, a new, new business owner is coming in, Sue Whitaker, who's certainly a friend of the town, and has been part of our revitalization for many years, is actually moving her quilting business on Main Street. Now, part of that is that they are relocating into a senior citizen, or senior housing project, her and her husband, but they've got their, she's got her 14-foot quilting machine, and she's actually gonna be giving quilting lessons, and kind of unique. I think it fits our theme that I'd like to see anyhow. It may not be our theme, but I think it'll kind of fit the arts and entertainment and the food, and I think it would go kind of unique and pretty nice. So we've got that action going on, and we've got a couple more meetings. I've got a meeting on Friday, which I can't say too much at this point, but I think, I know I made you aware of it, but we've got some exciting things that I can promise to everybody that, gotta keep our fingers crossed. We've got a lot of things that's ready to break for the town of Elkton, and the excitement is truly there, is truly there. So without that, I won't say anymore. Commissioner Piner?
Well, seeing that, I normally don't come down and break down like this, but after 57 years, I can actually say I really enjoy working with the board members that I'm affiliated with. I can honestly say, DJ, I hear you say this all the time, nobody likes you. You become a good, good board member. I'm gonna say that for the record. Now, DJ, now DJ, I need your help. You usually hear somebody say, okay, what do you want? It's not, I just want you to know that, because I know you, Concha abolished you sometime, but just going down here looking evil all the time when you say something, it don't mean anything. So anyway, on a serious note, I do have a couple announcements for the mayor and commissioners. Golf tournament that we're, we have set for August the 7th, it's gonna be one of the first ones. Mayor mentioned this a while ago. It'd be nice if we could start something as a mayor and commissioner in our town, and so we thought about all these fundraisers going on, and wanted to do something to, to help the Parks and Rec. So we wanna have a golf tournament, August the 7th, and we're starting to gear up now, and DJ, I do need your help on that, I have to say in that, on August the 7th, and we're gonna try to make a big, a fun event, maybe we can take it from town to town and challenge some mayors and commissioners departments.
And I think that that's what Earl and I, we, it was Earl's lead with this, but I think what we're gonna do, and I'm gonna try to enhance it a little bit, but we are gonna challenge the mayors and commissioners in the other towns. And I could, I could actually see this tournament, and what we're gonna do is host this tournament, even, it's gonna, we're gonna put it together, but we're gonna actually host it at the, what you call it?
We're gonna start it right at Sun, and we're gonna try to shift it around so no one gets left out.
And the thinking behind that is, is if we have the mayor and commissioners from Rising Sun, Northeast, and we're gonna challenge them, and our team will challenge them, and then we'll have, we'll have to put, they have to at least have the mayor on the team and one commissioner, but we would have, I think that we would have, our whole team would be, we'd make Charlie play, I don't think Mary Jo will play, but we could have, we can have our team, or the people of the town.
Earl Mayne getting noticed, because he's been practicing.
Yeah, very good.
We need Todd Frye.
I think it's gonna be really, really unique, and I think it would build a lot of energy through the whole county to be proud. Whoever gets that mayor and commissioners cup in the county, that would be one. I tell you, if we beat, if we beat Northeast, Rising Sun, Chesapeake City, we just have it sitting here every meeting. Chine it off, and we make a little jest, a little fun.
Vice versa if they beat, such and such. But we're saying that our fund would yet still be a purpose for fundraising for Parks and Rec. And then going one step further, I've been running a sixth, seventh, and eighth grade middle school basketball, I hate to say volunteer program, but anyhow, for the sixth, seventh, and eighth graders middle school, trying to make that atmosphere like a high school game. They had cheerleaders there today, and, and the parents have come out and supported. We get close to about 110 people come out, and it's really fun. And I went one step further for the Parks and Rec, the mayor and commissioners would like to put together a basketball tournament. I have right now either, I'm all about sports, you know that. I have two gyms I'm hoping to use, Elkton Christian, I think it's called, different now.
I see Christian.
Tri-State, and Elkton Middle School, but with Commissioner Gibbons, for maybe get a chance to use Elkton High School, and maybe even YMCA. I'm for that idea, because we do have a good little connection with the YMCA, and maybe we can have that and run the program in one day on all three courts. And I want to include the boys and the girls, because it's always left out, boys and girls basketball tournament. How you like that?
I like it.
And the dates though, I have set up here for March the 20th through the 21st, maybe a Friday and Saturday, or March the 27th and the 28th, Friday and Saturday. Reason why I'm saying that is because you can have a lot going for two days, and the excitement would build up for that next day on Saturday, and then we could really have a good turnout. So keep our fingers crossed that we can secure that within the next week, we go forward with it. Other than that, that's my idea.
Earl, we do have a little hiccup.
You can't play.
Well, listen. And listen, that is the answer. And, and listen, a ringer can't play neither. So I can't play, and a ringer can't play on that day, because I'm heading to Maine, and you'll be getting back from...
Well, I'll be in Myrtle Beach with the World Series for the softball team on the 7th. Can you change that?
Now see, because it's the mayor and commissioners, we can do anything you want.
All right.
And we want to do this as a team, DJ, because you're a part of the team, you're team help.
Yes. Listen, if we could do it...
Boy, I'm really unrolling.
What about July 24th?
July? Oh, I'm sorry.
Thank you for saying that.
Well, it works. Why you were July?
Oh, no, 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 the golf tournament. The golf tournament.
Oh.
Not the basketball, the golf tournament.
Oh, we're talking about golf tournament.
Yes.
Earl, you and I are on the same page.
Thank you, I'm so glad.
Yeah, the golf tournament.
I'm so glad somebody was listening.
The golf tournament.
Well, let's go, because, oh, go ahead. What would you like to do?
Well, either, either July 24th, July 31st, is 31st good?
Well, the only question is the course, its availability. And that's where we locked in, because we're gonna run into the YMCA tournament, you're gonna run into, I think the, it's...
We're gonna have to get, you're gonna have to get Steve and Louis.
Well, I'm just saying, you don't have to work around our schedule, but you'd have to get...
I'm prepared to play.
You'd have to get, I won't be there.
Okay. Okay, well, not to make a big thing out of this. In other words, you mean I gotta bring my 18 men?
Yeah, sure has to bring my 18.
Okay.
All right, take a look at it, maybe we can.
Okay.
All right, DJ, you're on.
With Public Works, if I can fit into the budget, my suggestion there is the director and whatever commissioner happens to be overseeing DPW at that particular time should go to Vegas along with the director. All right, so you and I, buddy. That's my vote.
All right, very good, that's good news.
That's my budget.
Yeah, I'll make sure it gets in there, we're good.
We're supposed to switch every three months.
Every three months, every two. What is the, I saw Button Woods, Chaney had sent, said a letter was going out today or tomorrow. What was the cutoff as far as them getting back to us? What was the timeframe? I didn't see the letter.
March 13th.
March 13th? And abnormal for me, but that's all I have.
Hey, very good. Anyone in the audience would like to have anything to say tonight?
Please?
Very good. Well, here's what we're gonna do.
I don't take numbers, because...
We're gonna pause the meeting. It is 6:30, we're gonna pause the meeting. We're gonna start the meeting back at 7 o'clock for the public hearing. The public hearing has been advertised at 7 o'clock, so we need to stay based on the advertisement. So we've got a half hour.
Okay, pause the meeting.
Yep. Does that sound good? Is that what we should do?
We can do that. All right, and we're paused.
We're paused.
You're almost paused.
Oh, hello, the clock says 7.
Gene, you got it over this? We should be.
We ready to go?
We gotta convene the meeting.
Okay, very good. We'll just, what we're gonna do is, we went on tape delay, the tape is back on. It is two minutes after 7:00. The, I'm gonna go ahead and open up the public hearing early, but we're gonna leave it open this whole time, till at least 7:06. So if we don't have any comments on the, on the hearing, so who's gonna introduce this thing?
Good evening. You have before you ordinance 6-2014. This is an ordinance, an amendment to the Elkton zoning ordinance. Article 16 signs, section 18 permitted signs. We're gonna add subsection 7, permanent residential subdivision or multifamily signs. The Elkton Planning Commission had proposed and recommended the following amendments to the ordinance relating to permanent residential subdivision or multifamily signs, following their public hearing held on December 8th, 2014. The, section 1, Elkton zoning ordinance, article 16 signs, section 18, will be amended to include the following. Article 16 signs, section 18 permitted signs, subsection 7. This is the new language. Permanent residential subdivision or multifamily signs. Excuse me, permanent residential subdivision or multifamily identification signs. Round signs with the name of the residential subdivision or multifamily development may be allowed at any entrance provided that, 1, there may not be more than two signs identifying such subdivision or development at each entrance. 2, such sign shall not exceed 35 square feet in area for a single-sided sign, or 20 square feet per side for a double-sided sign. 3, the height of the sign base shall be appropriate for the structure and landscaping as determined by the zoning administrator. 4, the total monument shall be no larger than four times the square footage of the That is the amendment to the ordinance in total.
Very good. And this is for introduction tonight. Correct?
Yes.
And when will we be voting on this, Lou?
March fourth.
On March fourth. Is there, it is a public hearing, it is seven oh five. Is there anyone that has any questions or comments? Seeing none, hearing none? This public hearing is closed. Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you.
And this meeting is adjourned.
You need to make a motion to.
Oh, we have to make a motion for introduction. Do we have a motion to approve the?
Ordinance six dash two oh one four. I make motion that we enter that for introduction purposes.
Let me ask a real quick question. Should it be two thousand and fifteen or should it be?
No, it started then.
Okay, very good. We had a motion.
It's an old one.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none? All in favor?
Aye.